All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll call Jessica.
Yeah.
Yes.
Leah?
Here.
Jim?
Yes.
Ethan?
Here.
Carly here. And I'm also here reading this from Charlie Knox.
Yes.
Please join me in pledge of allegiance.
In pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and the super republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My volunteer to read the mission statement.
I will. While our area school district partnership with community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be a productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thanks, Jim. Moving on to two A, approval of the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to two B, approval of the March 6, 2023 Board Regular and Executive Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to three, addressing the board. Three A is a recognition of our high school art show participants.
This is one of my favorite things to do every year, board members. Thank you for joining us and going out and visiting the art show, which took place in February over at the Historian. They continue to be great partners with our with our school district. And also to extend a note of gratitude, not just to our high school art teachers who inspire our students, but we recognize the beauty that you have found in our students' artwork is something that began as early on as kindergarten and likely has even been inspired by their loving families. So I'm excited to share with you the slate of individuals who've been selected by you, our board members, over the course of the past couple of weeks. Unfortunately, not everyone could be here tonight. I think there's some softball going on and church activities and a bunch of other things. We recognize how busy our artists are. But for those students who aren't here, first of all, welcome and congratulations. Thank you for sharing your talents with us. You truly make our school district a better place to be. So I would love it if those students who are here can meet up with their board member. And so those students who are here, if you would be so kind as to, well, let's see here. I know Samantha's here, Sam's here. Sunset with Ms. Fisher, if you guys wouldn't mind coming on down. Get connected with your board member, get connected with your administrator.
The, what do we? Not a board member. Nice to meet you, Rodney.
What is your name?
My name is Elizabeth.
Hi.
How are you doing? I'm glad, nice to see you.
How are you?
I'm sure. What are we talking to? Yeah, let's sit down. I don't know if we're gonna do this in open sessions or not. But I'll tell you what, and I just think, I really do.
If it's okay, we'd love to have each board member just take a moment to say aloud why they selected this person's artworks and maybe ask the student if they would be willing to explain what inspired them to create their documents. So take a minute or two to do that. And then for those in the audience, I will share various pictures of what we've got here.
And I think it's great. I think the color is very interesting, the contrast of the black and white of the body. Yeah, that's awesome. That's awesome. No, okay, so that, and I think that's sort of the start of it because the most awesome thing is what you've done with the colors coming out of the eyes and the nose and the mouth. And you think about it, you think about, for example, if you did, if this would have been a photograph and you had taken the photograph, so it would be, I mean, it would be like, whoa! Right? Right? But if you've done it so well that it's just so interesting, you're not, you're not like repulsed by it, right? Which, I mean, it's, it's kinda, but it's awesome. I mean, I just think it's awesome work. It's so well done. And the reason, partly the reason I think it's so well, not as I mentioned, the color, right? And then the black and white, but, okay, so this is, this is kind of, this is really, really interesting what I just told you, right? But from a color standpoint, the color is emanating from the black and white, right? Wow, you're great. So now, do you, do you like Marc Chigall? If you're, he's a modernist, let me, let me show you that stuff because I think I, you're in this here.
Oh, yeah.
So he's sort of a post, a post-impressionist, kind of big guy, and, and he, um, let's see if I can. So it's, a lot of the pictures they have on, so, like, so I was totally reminded of, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not, you didn't, you didn't, but it was, it reminded you, what you did reminded me of this, right? So it's this sort of, the forms are not like classically drawn, right? The color, don't look at, there's a division of color here, there's one here, there's one here, you got a red horse. I mean, it's, so this is, this is, this is what you've done, right? And he's like, he's, he's selling, I don't know, he's not lying, I think that he's, he's, his pictures are worth, I mean, millions and millions of dollars. So let's see if I can find this one. So that's not really, okay, so you get into these, right? That's.
You know what, I think I have seen this before.
Yeah, isn't that cool? So we're gonna focus on him, we gotta focus on you, but like, look at this.
I was trying, I always struggle with like drawing perfect versions. Like, I don't know, it's just never like, I've, I've never had a personal choice. It's a, it's a travel. A twist. This one I feel like.
It's gonna be number minutes if you don't mind please, the numbers minutes.
Yeah, so this is drawn, this is, yeah.
I did, um, charcoal for like.
Yeah? What is this, like a ghost work?
And, um, the, like, that's what I chose to do, it was like, not just this, or like, do a caution of the face.
That's pretty, that's pretty basic. Well, I guess that's a woman, right? Yeah, yeah.
So like, my idea behind it, like, I saw some photos on my.
If we could bring it from back.
Some inspiration and, um, that one was more of like, I was like. I wanted to do it.
You're just fine.
The black and white, but also the initial, like, I feel like we excel.
Do you think we could bring our artists together for a picture?
Well, right, and so the other, just what I was thinking about, it was like that, I was thinking about it in a slightly different way, and that is, we never know where true color is gonna come from, right? We think we know, we think we, we know where it should in a, in a picture or even in, in life, but we just, we just don't. We have no idea, right? That's why, that's just awesome. So you did a great job. Apparently you're gonna get your.
We need you here, Rod.
What's that? Yeah, no, no, you did an awesome job. That's, that's just great. F you, you going out there starting?
I'm taking your picture, so you go first.
Yeah, powder that down.
You want to talk then?
I have to. The front, like, there were computers.
All right, she's gonna have some.
Cause there's like, nobody's even, like, everybody's triplets in one. This battery here is charging. Right.
Let's give a round of applause for our artists. It's a quick lead. Thank you. I'd like to do the bachelorette dance tonight. Thank you.
Thanks for doing it. She was fine.
I see. You speak to that.
All right, moving on to three B, school news. Ethan, would you like to start us out?
Yeah, so tomorrow night, our high school fire pop concert at seven thirty. And we have softball, JV, softball JV, Mar City, have two games this week. We're playing Thursday at the Forest at five, and Sunday at Dodgeville, Mar City's at eleven, and JV at four thirty. Mar City JV baseball also have their first game, I believe, at Loda Wednesday, March twenty ninth. And then Boys and Girls with Track Beat, UW Platteville, at five thirty next Tuesday. And of course, next week is our script.
Thanks. Dr. Slaughter, any school news?
I just wanted to share one bit of news that came up this morning, and I just think it's fantastic. I don't know if you've heard the news, but we had two of our students, Eli Cornell and Nathan, I'm gonna get his last name wrong, Lizinski?
Lizinski.
Lizinski, thank you. Beautiful family in our district. Well, both of these students just recently competed at the Junior Achievement Competition and received second place, and now they're on to the next round of, of the competition. I believe that's taking place in Sheboygan. How fortunate we are not only to have students like this, but then also all of the people, business partners, the new Land, Lake Ridge Bank representative, Casey's been with our district now and helped us out a number of times. I know he has a great relationship with Scott. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Cassidy for all he does to inspire our young people as well. So if you happen to see these two guys, don't be afraid to say nice job and wish them best of luck.
Board members, any school news?
The only thing that I would add is tomorrow night at six o'clock is the presentation with the therapist about student motivation. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
That high school, that brand is organized.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Other school?
I, um, I've got, when I visited the ELC this week, got to spend a little bit of time with, with Rachel Johnson. We walked around during their camp block where students change classrooms to work on really targeted math and literacy skills, so I got to observe some of that. It's a pretty short window, but they really do a lot of just fast-focused targeted work on, you know, I saw counting games and shape games and all sorts of stuff. And so it was, it was just a good, good opportunity to see what, what our kindergarten teachers are up to. We talked a little bit about how the work they're doing outside of the classroom during professional development on letters training to really focus on those literacy skills a lot more. They visited New Glarus to learn more about the reading resources that they're using there. We talked a little bit about how the ELC is still short two parent professionals in that building, which makes things like that camp block more challenging because it's just a lot more coordination to figure out how to get the right coverage in, in those rooms at the right times. And then I just happened to be there just as they were transitioning the gym over to lunchtime to the cafeteria. And so it was just a reminder that, I know we all know this, but just a reminder of the needs that that building has, that they're, they're filling needs that that building wasn't built to do and, and a good reminder that, that that's a, needs to remain a priority for us, that I know we all know that. And the kindergarten spring sing is Friday, April twenty first at the PC.
Okay, thank you.
Continuing with the facilities that probably mentioned, this past weekend, the basketball club put on a youth basketball tournament with over seventy-five teams in the area, which brought in a couple thousand people through town. Just a good reminder of how we need, need more space with gyms and, or did a very good job this year. I know they've been very generous to the school district in the past, so a lot of hard work by, by many, many volunteers in the area, so it was a good event.
A lot of them, thank you. Other school news? All right, moving on to three C, citizens' comments.
I did see.
Moving on to four, personnel transactions.
Board members, there's an addendum to tonight's packet.
Motion to approve the addendum? Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to five, consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to pull out?
And President, I might just comment, board members, we have the cooperative, purchasing cooperative that has been part of our normal annual spring request. We placed that in consent agenda, but happy to speak today should we have additional questions.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Seven. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Leah. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our discussion items. Six A is our community member reports. We will start with education committee, Carly.
Um, so we met at the beginning of the month and went through some setting updates and a policy of, of, that we'll talk about. In curriculum updates, we learn the eighth graders right now are working on their four year plans and we're doing, doing business in the backyard tours. Some staff from Watertown and Bartabell came to visit our teachers to learn about our math curriculum. And as I mentioned, then we had some staff go to New Glarus to learn about their literacy resources, review ours. We're also looking at, excuse me, the, we're investigating the UW Oshkosh CAP program, which is similar to a dual credit program, to see if something like that would work for us to allow our students more opportunities to go get college credit while they're here. Grading and setting updates, the juniors took the ACT last week, two weeks ago, and on April eleventh, the ninth and tenth graders are gonna be taking pre-ACT secure. We didn't have a whole lot in new equity updates. The, um, we talked briefly about the documents in the packet tonight, and that Percy Rom came to talk with students on the thirteenth to go over the history of the N-word and consequences and impact of that. And then we talked a little about summer school, which we'll hear again more about tonight, and review the student records policy. Our next meeting's May first, where we'll talk about high school course change proposals and get an update on instruction coaches.
Thank you. Board members, questions for Carly? All right, moving on to community and legislative engagement. Leah?
We had our first, like, real community and legislative engagement meeting, um, February twenty seventh, it was virtual. Started out by talking about what Governor Eversa talked about at the convention, which is his per pupil increase of three hundred and seventy-four dollars in the first year and six hundred and nine five the second year, which is shocking. And then investing more in special education. Carly developed a very nice calendar, because we don't have much of calendars, with the legislative calendar that'll tell us what, what to do when and all the things that'll come up there. We talked about how we're engaging our district, one, with partnership with the village, two, the day of the Capitol, which is Thursday, Wednesday. And then we have Senator Hasselblad and Representative Baer coming, I don't remember the date now. Yep, that sounds about right. I wrote it down, and I don't remember. So they'll be coming. Then we talked about writing some position letters, like we've done in the past, on special education, on increased revenue limit, and on mental health funding. We all had homework. And we meet again tomorrow at five thirty, also virtual.
And President, if I could just interrupt. Thank you, Leah, for a wonderful overview. We're so fortunate to have Ethan Fenrich, who said, you know, I'd like to also be on a subcommittee of the board. And Ethan, thank you for being part of our community legislative engagement team. You've been tasked with an important job on April thirteenth. Can you tell everyone what that job is?
Yeah, so I first talked to Salerno and asked if I could lead the high school tour for representatives coming in. So I'm doing my research right now, getting my facts together about all of our high school utilities and everything there, so just give it, you got that.
You continue to represent our school board so well from the student perspective. Thank you for availing your time and talents with this.
Thanks, Leah. Questions for, yeah. All right, moving on to six B, board norms planning. This is going to be with, I think I said Jessica.
Yes, Jessica's also helping us out with this.
So, do you have a discovery?
So this is, norms and board norms are, is on our workshop agenda for April. I believe that I was the person that suggested adding it. And we had a pre-meeting with Dan, now this is gonna be the challenge.
Neerad.
Neerad, okay, that's how I was gonna pronounce it, but I was worried. Dan Neerad from Wasbee spoke with us to kind of give us an overview and get a little bit of insight as to why we weren't doing this. And he said that, how he would approach the session would be to start with, you know, discussing why, why we want to establish meeting norms. And then he said he would also, he would share some examples with us in advance, and if we find it useful, we can do school board norms, then we could do school board and superintendent norms, then the superintendent could do norms on his own. So it could be a three-pronged approach, but we can assess it after each one to see if it's valuable. My thought, and then Rod can chime in, is that, you know, I had suggested it in the spirit of continuous improvement and reflection, like that it's only gonna make us a stronger and more effective school board when we're dealing with all the incredibly important issues that we have to deal with as a school group, so.
I do, just, just a couple of things. First, I think the process that we talked about last week makes some sense because it gives us the opportunity, after we're done with one phase of the work, to say, listen, this is like not, not worth our time. And so, and so I think that's, that's important. But, you know, the process is just the pipe, and we, we've still gotta get stuff into the pipe and through the pipe, and that's the challenge. And that's where I reserve the right to, to respectfully disagree. But I think, I do think we're starting from, from a decent, a decent standpoint in terms of, of process because, as I said, we're going to, we can, we can simply say this just isn't, this isn't meaningful, this isn't worth what we, what we thought it was gonna be, and then we're, then we're done, then we're not spending anybody else's time doing this. But we'll, we'll afford to a productive, productive discussion, and, and we'll see, we'll see how it goes. I, I, I'm very anxious to see what the example, what the example norms are that, that Dan is going to circulate in advance of the meeting. Those will be very, those will be very, very telling because I still, you're, I think, well acquainted with how I, how I think about this idea. So, so at any rate, I, I, I think we're in, in as good a shape as we can be, moving into our, moving into our workshop, and we'll, we'll take it from there.
And Dan's gonna join us in person, just, it won't be, it's free, it should be yours, so.
Board members, any questions, comments?
I have a question, and if this is just for the third, that's fine. I'm curious, using your analogy of, of the pipe and moving things through it, if this is talking about the pipe, I think, I'm curious, the process of putting things in the pipe, and I'm wondering if like, if that makes, if that's making sense to you, and if, so if, if that part is gonna be things that he covers, or?
I don't understand your.
Okay, so to be more, so to be.
So I'll let him decide.
So to be more clear, like, is, is the discussion going to just be about, going to be about process and how we manage, you know, meetings and, and work, or is it also, I'm interested in just how we function and organize in terms of things like goal setting and tracking over the year progress toward those kinds, like, that's kind of what I'm interested in, I'm wondering if that's part of what this discussion is or no, if it really is more just.
I think it can be, I mean, I guess we see, but I think it's, that's part of the, he said he's gonna start with the why. So if our why is more to what you're talking about, then that's what we can focus on. I think it's what we want it to be and what will be meaningful to us.
I agree. I think the goal here is to develop statements that we can all ascribe to, aspire to. If it comes to some of the thoughtful reflections you have about, you know, goals and these sorts of things, we're coming up with the strategic plan here yet this summer. And so to the extent to which we want to look at other data sets, other data points, we can certainly take the time to discuss that as well. But more or less, the statements that we all aspire to is really the development, I think, of Dr. Neerad's presentation.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts? All right, thank you both for being part of that, and thank you for, um, for bringing all of that forth as well, and we will talk about this again on third. Okay, moving on to sixteen, summer school, twenty twenty-three. Very exciting.
Thank you. So as Carly mentioned, at the education committee, we had discussed, and I shared about our upcoming summer school program for twenty twenty-three. Very similar look to normal years, where we have two sessions, where we'll offer some academic coursework and then some of the more enrichment coursework. A change this year, a little bit larger a change, is typically our sessions go to the last two weeks in June is session one, and then we have only a week off, usually fourth of July week, and then we start session two for two weeks. This year, due to about sixty staff members attending the PLC Institute in Madison, the week of July tenth, we decided, instead of trying to find many subs, we would have a two-week break in between the sessions. So that's atypical, but it didn't cause too much of a fuss for our staff or our families, it seemed like. So next year, we will return, we will resume regularly scheduled programming with only one, one week break, unless, unless people really like it, so who knows? But as you have in your board packet, as on the school district website, we have this year's summer school programming. Again, we offer the skills booster courses and those enrichment courses as well. They range from, again, theater camp to no bake, no cook cooking class, to clay and pottery, to reading, to outdoor activities. We try and get a variety of pieces while also not, not overlapping with the rec department. We've had conversations in the past about not offering certain activities or sports specific activities, because we don't wanna overstep our bounds with the rec department. Other than that, Eric McCormick is still our summer school coordinator, Chelsea Sutter. Chelsea Sutter, my admin assistant, does a lot of the behind-the-scenes works, she put together the catalog, is working on our first round of registration for families. And then summer school for the general public, then, and the rest of the families will open on Tuesday, April 4th. We've learned in the past not to do it on the Monday after spring break. Now, a lot of families are back and they're rushing and they're not happy at 8:00 AM and things, and they're trying to get back into the routine. So it'll open Tuesday, April 4th. And that's all I, well, that's all I really have for today because, like I said, I think the course description handbook, you've seen versions of it enough to know the programming and the classes. Any questions?
No, this is great.
Okay.
Very exciting.
Great, thank you.
Moving on to, Sarah, you gonna come back?
Yep.
D responses to negative student actions, can you give her some language?
Dr. Slerner, I are taking this one. So we've been on a journey in trying to have, trying to have a system, policies, procedures in responses to, just trying actions, behaviors, and language. And so we're going to be going through a presentation where we're walking through a document that's been worked on for about five months now, in order to get to the point where we feel like it's publishable and finalized, even though it is going to be a breathing, living document, but ready to be published for you all and for the greater community. So I'll hand it off to Dr. Slerner.
Yeah, so with that said, it might just be helpful to take two steps back in order to take five steps forward. We held a community listening engagement session, I want to say, back on December 10th or so, in which we were really sought to get the feedback of our community as to what standards are above the line and below the line. And it may be helpful just to say that we've kept all of our district's DEI, that stands for diversity, equity, and inclusion work, available for families and others to see on our district's website. Simply go to mounthorpschools.org, go to Board of Education, and then you can see that we've identified where you can find not only our board's work around that wonderful statement you all passed, but also our county work with the Dane County Equity Consortium, and then how it all ties together under the district's mission statement. So you may remember the board also helped us, particularly with the Safety and Wellness Committee, developing a framework of how we go about making decisions in our district to support students, to support our district's mission, and to self-guide, self-check us, self-assess us as to whether or not, well, we are, we are doing as we said we're going to do. And this is a document that we routinely refer to within our senior leadership team, and we'd like to continue to use as its, its five guiding questions, or six guiding questions, I should say, as we make decisions here in the district. Sarah, can you walk us through this part, please?
Yeah, I would like to. The opening paragraph above the blue box really outlines the purpose of our work, and it's not just around, as the presentation slides, first slide said, about discriminatory actions, behaviors, and language. It is around how we address just negative student actions, behaviors, and language. People just want to know like what's allowed and what's not allowed, what's above, what's above the line and what's below the line. So within this document, we really have two main sections. We have the section I'm going to talk about first in the blue box, talking about impact. Oftentimes, you could think about intent and impact. And a lot of times, people think, well, we have to think about what the intent was. Why did someone do what they did? But really, we're trying to reframe it as what kind of impact did that have on the people or peoples within that community? So the principals will be considering the impact and prioritizing that over the intent and looking at it as a level one, level two, or level three. Meaning, level one, was there a breach in civility? It wasn't malicious, it caused little damage, there was little impact to those affected. And in our PBIS system, it's sometimes called a minor, it's teacher handled, teacher directed. When we think of impact, it could be more of a level two, more injurious. Harmful, did it create emotional harm, mental harm to those affected? Maybe considered more of a major behavior incident. And then level three, was it outright malicious? And this is where intent could play a part, but it's something that causes enough emotional harm that it affects a bigger community than just that maybe one harmed person. Maybe there was repeated behaviors as well that could lead to that level three or maliciousness. So first of all, then, that matrix, thinking about intent or impact. Then the administrator would think about, okay, what about interventions? How can we help the student or these students get through this when they caused the harm? So we look at it at four different levels, four different responses. We're in the business of education, so we want to really think about how we can educate Think about the history behind something, educate someone on something. Maybe it's historical context, the societal context. What's appropriate at school? What's appropriate at home? What kind of language do we allow or not allow to school versus maybe what's allowed at home? Talking through that education piece, because kids have to know the why behind something. Usually when they understand the why, they usually do better. Another intervention is something called restorative justice or restorative circles. It's an opportunity for those that have caused harm to talk through what they did. It's an opportunity for those who have felt harm to talk through how they felt. So restorative circles allow those harmed students, and maybe that harmed student doesn't want to be involved in that restorative circle, so they could ask for a family member or someone else to be there as well for them. The next piece, or the next level is corrective. Maybe this is something that people may jump to when they think about consequences within schools. But corrective is that not, that natural or logical consequence. Community service, maybe modifying a school schedule, maybe loss of privileges. So a good example could be lunchroom. Kids are throwing food. What would be the logical corrective thing in the lunchroom then, at the end of the lunch hour, or maybe at the end of the lunch period? They help the custodians clean it up, pick it all up. That's that corrective intervention. And the last one then is something that we not, we try not to get to, but that punitive piece. Really, what is that, that offending students way that people can, we don't like to use the word to like punish, but really, what is that extreme consequence? Is it detention, suspension, or expulsion? Again, this is like the last piece that we want to get to as we look at these levels.
So we'll give you an example, a model for you, what we think might be how we would address a situation, and I'm going to give you an opportunity to offer your suggestions in another scenario based upon the document that you have before you. So if you don't already have open on your computer screen, if you would go to the part of your attachment, your board packet that actually has the document that we're referring to tonight. And let's tell you about a student who got upset over a poor grade in class. The student, he or she confronts the teacher during classes and uses some inappropriate language. The teacher refers the student to the office. What might be helpful for you to know in this circumstance is that this is a middle school age student, and that this is the student's first occurrence at some kind of inappropriate behavior. So how might, or what should the responding administrator do based upon the matrix you find on page two of the document? Let's just go back to that real quick. What do you think would be the appropriate response? Please hold. Put that up for us. We know it's a middle school student. And again, the beauty of this product, I think, is it's responsive to the age of the student as well as trying to consider what are some things that actually correct behavior before it becomes problematic, pattern-like behavior. But in this case here, because it's a middle school student, we're going to go to the second matrix. It's the first occurrence. And where would we put this? Would we put this at a level one impact, using inappropriate language with the teacher? Or do we, do we see this as a level two? In our estimation, it would depend on the student and the degree to which he or she is remorseful of their behavior, I think, to discern whether or not we're going to include some kind of corrective intervention in this matter. But if the teacher and the student are willing to sit down and talk it through, we hope that they will be, especially an educator hoping to model for our young people how to resolve conflict, but then also to the degree to which we can educate the student, this is likely where the responding administrator might fall. Are you tracking with me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this is the advanced group, Sarah. This is gifted and talented. Can I give them the next one?
Every day.
Ask away.
One, one piece. Not everything is like neat and tight as well.
That's right.
And we, we know you're probably thinking like, there's gray, there's always gray, right? It's not always black and white. But this is a communicative piece for our community, our students, our families, also to share how we handle discipline within our schools. It's a way for all of our buildings to be on the same page as well, and to talk through situations and scenarios. So we have a common framework, a common language that all can sort of wrap their heads around as we move forward with it as well.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I should bear in mind, too, that this is a process, you said five months in the making. This has been vetted through not only our families, but our staff, our equity committee, our school administrators. Students participated in helping us frame some of this as well. And to your point, it is a living document. It's a document that there may be things that we just haven't thought of yet that necessitate fine tuning and improvement. Let's give you another example, unfortunately a real example. Both of these, by the way, are real examples. Let's say we have a student, Student A, who is talking to Student B about Student C. Student C happens to be a black student. Student A refers to the black student by using the N-word. Student B makes no response at all. But multiple students, they've overheard the conversation and they report it to the administration. Later on, Student C, the student of color, learns about the circumstance. Here's some additional contextual information that may frame or may not frame your decision. First, Student A and B are both white. All three students are high school students. This happens to be the second occurrence that Student A has made some kind of discriminatory or racist remark in the last month alone. And Student A also happens to be on a, on a sports team, and therefore subject to the Board of Education's Code of Conduct book. Turn and talk to a partner, if you don't mind, real quick, looking at this matrix. Knowing that this is the second occurrence, where would you place this student? What impact level? Talk about it, and then let's come back together again. I'd be curious to hear your opinion about where we would need to land on this.
I have one more question. What are we doing?
I was pretty reading these to remind myself. Student A called, Student B called. Does that, I feel like Student A...
Yes, probably.
Just give them tools.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. They have faith.
The thing that I don't understand is why the race of the two white students. And that word is inappropriate in my mind.
I don't know, it's a different word.
At school.
Yeah. We have a different matrix of decisions. Because we don't understand according to this matrix, you need to know what the light and the decision is. See, or we don't...
We don't understand. I was wondering if that was on the Code, would they not already be played? I would say, if that one was concerned twice, the other code should be... But yeah, the straightforward, but it's not, so I'm thinking, it's a repeat in this password. It moves to a higher level, I would say, because if you, if something was once, you have to, if you like tried education in the past or whatever, that's not...
You can do another minute if you don't mind.
At that point, so you start moving to the higher levels of punishing this one, just showing...
I think... I think... I think Student A... We can start that. We can start that. We can start that. We can start that. Two, three.
So you're going... Yes, I would say, probably. I don't know if they have the, it's not the least, you know, this process necessarily, but I would just say like, maybe that's it.
And you don't even know what it's...
Well, yeah, maybe.
Before we, before we dig in, this is not a hard and fast process. There may be other information that provides additional context that helps us to make a more informed decision. But based upon the information that I've given you so far, I'm going to throw a little monkey wrench into this in a moment, but I wanted to see if it'll change your mind.
Does a student have an IEP?
Oh.
I've been on the board long enough to know that changes the game.
That is a very fair question. That was the monkey wrench I was going to throw, so thanks for throwing it. That's great. What, what impact does that have, if any, on this process?
Well, then they have to have a meeting with that team to decide if the reason that they're on the IEP correlates to what happened, and that can skew what kind of discipline we can actually do.
Yeah, what you're referring to is something called a manifestation here.
Thank you, I couldn't, it was there.
That's awesome. I'm glad that you remembered it. And this committee comprises of the parent, the student, and other people who work with the student. They have to discern whether or not the student's actions were manifest of the student's disability. So if I'm a speech and language student and I utter an epithet that's racial and racial in nature, the degree to which my speech and language disability impacting is probably not going to, not going to matter much, because speech and language... Now, if I'm a student who has emotional behavioral disabilities and I issue some kind of racial epithet, then there could be cause for the team to decide, all right, we need to think about what kind of discipline can be brought to this student, assuming that the student's going to be placed on a suspension suspension for a period of time. So really thoughtful. Thank you for asking that question. But let's just assume for this scenario that this is a student who does not receive specialized services. Rod and Jessica, would you be willing to weigh in and tell us where you thought on the matrix this might land or what areas?
Yeah, we thought right in the middle, impact level two, occurrence to the education, restorative correction, and punitive.
For Student A, what, if anything, do we do for Student B? Student B remembers the student who just observed what took place but didn't, didn't enter the fray.
I think that student needs some education on what to do in that, because very possibly that student was like, I have no idea how to respond to this situation. You have to give them tools in their toolbox to be able to, like, whoa, that wasn't cool or something.
Or maybe Student B said exactly that, we don't know. That's not enough information.
Well, in this case here, we do know. In the scenario, I did say Student B just stood and just observed, didn't say anything. But I do think you're right, given additional information, that might provide us a different response. But we have this bystander syndrome, right? And what we permit, we promote. And if we permit this kind of thing, are we in essence just saying, oh, we're promoting that it's okay for you to do that kind of stuff? How do we help that student? Let's talk about Student C, because Student C's viewpoint on things might be different than other students who are of the same persuasion as, as that student. Just because you're black or Italian, you all don't see things the same way. Let's layer in some additional information here. Let's say Student C is not offended by this comment, but other black students who are within the realm of hearing it are, are upset by what they heard.
Yeah, so I think this exercise actually highlights not, and it's very well done, but it highlights not the efficacy of a, of a table with columns and so forth, but it points, points to a broader issue about what language is acceptable regardless of race. So that's, that's the question that we have to wrestle to the ground, is not, well, he belongs in, you know, he belongs in table six, item two, B on Saturdays, and the question is, the question is what language, as a matter of policy, what language is acceptable or not in the student population? And so, and, and probably the heart, well, the N-word is a difficult one to wrestle to the ground, isn't it? But is it, is it any more acceptable or any less acceptable for kids of another race to use that word as the, as the kid in the, in the example? And the, the... Because that says, I wanna hide my use of that word by using this euphemism because, for whatever reason, I wanna hide it. And that gets directly to intent.
And then potentially the impact. You're right. And so those are the kinds of things that we would be calling out when those situations arise. And quite frankly, people have become pretty well educated about how to be covert racists, use covert racism language, where they're not necessarily calling out the N-word, but they're using other kinds of colloquialisms and the like. And we need to be able to say to those students, not here.
Right.
And sometimes that means even educating our families about that too. So I appreciate the insights there. Any other reflect? I didn't get a chance to hear from this team.
Sorry, Sarah.
Why, you're sorry?
Okay.
I guess my thought just on the overall plan was that interest versus malicious, it's very subjective and I could see that being caused for debate.
And I think that partly goes to, how many incidences have we had with this student? If this is a pattern of performance that is emerging with this student, then I would argue that there's greater support that this is being impactful in a less than positive way. If it's been one issue, gosh, I didn't realize that that's what that saying means, no one needs to pound the flesh, right? It just has to be dependent upon the fact pattern of the case.
And that makes me more comfortable with the idea of repeat versus non-repeat, because the first sentence involved is just very subjective.
Yeah. And now you see what kind of decision-making process that your school administrators must go through, your teachers must go through as they try to attempt to discern these sometimes very sticky situations. But to the point that was made earlier, thank you, Rod, for making it. There are just some things that are just not gonna be acceptable here in our schools.
Right.
And that's just one.
You mentioned the families may need to get educated. And I think we need to lean on that more. The families need to be educated instead of may need to be educated. That situation that we're talking about, our teachers, our administrators have to have the support of the families. And without that support, it's gonna be unfair to Diana's mention. We have to educate these families and let them know, to Rod's point, that's not tolerated in the schools, period. And I think that's why I continue to go back, is the education of the family as well, not just the student.
Thanks for supporting that idea. And in fact, Sarah and I are in the process of writing a column for the local newspaper. And I think we'll include that in the column here. It'll be an April guest editorial.
And the theme of family involvement and communication came up after the December 12 DEI night with the community. Came up again within our debrief with our district equity committee as well. That was a strong theme in the feedback that came back over and over. And we made sure to put it especially into the response interventions paragraph about continued communication and partnership with families is crucial, because that's where we need it. So that was a good theme that you picked up on that we're definitely gonna hold tight to.
Our students are watching. They're watching the administration, they're watching their classmates, they're watching our board. And let me tell you, I've had a couple of incidences where I've just been in the lunchroom at the high school and I've had students approach me as the board statement about nondiscrimination is displayed on the screen, and they've actually come forward to say thank you. Because they appreciate that the status quo can't continue. There's not a significant number of breaches in our schools, but when they happen, they are really impactful. This is a small community. And it storms not just in our schoolhouse, but it brews even outside the schoolhouse and the social media, and those problems then become brought back into our schoolhouse. So everything we can do to be purposeful, judicious, clear with people about what the expectation is upfront so that there's no surprises, no one wants a gotcha here, is really the intent of why this document has been put together. So a tip of the hat to you, board members, a tip of the hat to all those who've been a part of this process. You can see that process here on this last slide. And I'd like us to continue to monitor this, so that way if we do need to make adjustments, we can do that just in time, or perhaps maybe pull the team back together again in a reasonable amount of time to determine whether or not we need to make some fine tuning. But a great conversation to be had tonight, and I thank you for allowing us to have it.
So you mentioned you were going to put together an article for the newspaper. Will there be other communications with parents and students about, you know, appropriate and inappropriate types of, just some like guidelines or something along those lines?
Yes. In fact, I think that's a great point. That's our next step, is to take time to educate our students about what's acceptable and not acceptable. We haven't talked about the best way to do that. My guess is it'll probably happen during staff time at the high school and maybe during our advisory time during our middle school. Ethan, you have to say that.
I was gonna sort of, yeah, like for our advisory time, we have, with our advisory core and teachers, they usually have lessons to show us, that'd be like a perfect time to have an hour.
I don't think bringing everyone together in a big room is gonna be helpful for any of them. But I do think that's where the deeper conversations can be had and address things. But I do think we need to do a better job of communicating that to parents. And the suggestion that's been made here tonight, rest assured, we'll include that in our op-ed piece that we'll be providing to the local newspaper.
I think as a parent to high school kids who hear things and see things, I think knowing that, knowing that there's a process, knowing that this has been developed and that there is a process and that there are consequences, I think will just go a long way. Because that's what I hear from them is, I heard this, but I don't think anything happened. And knowing that this is out there, I think is really important.
Yeah, especially educating students about the bystander piece, that Student B that heard that. To me, I've always felt when I was a high school principal and there was a fight in my building, it was the students, in my opinion, who were circling the fight that were worse than the kids who were in the fight or as bad, because they had the capacity to stop it, they did. And so what can we do to educate so that people take responsibility for the culture that they want to be in?
But also giving them those tools so they know.
Yes.
Like there's a whole TV show about it where people like bully somebody and a whole restaurant just sits there because no one, like, if you don't know what to do, then people just freeze. So giving them like, you know, those tools to phrases, anything so they can have it.
I think sometimes people are, you know, are in a situation like that, sometimes people are afraid of physical harm to themselves. So that's kind of sometimes stops people from doing those things.
I really appreciate the very thoughtful approach in reaching out to the community. I was at that event, it was super good, and you know, it's been shared and revised all along the way until we hit the currently point. I do think that there's been a request for this, you know, how do we respond? So I think it's definitely filling a need and it's gonna be good.
Appreciate the time and the support.
Other comments, questions, thoughts? All right, moving on to our action seven pages, our first reading, policy 347, student records. It's Sarah, it's your night.
It's my night. Well, I wasn't having to talk too fast, sorry about that. Okay, let me grab my notes here, sorry about that. Well, I got one up, so we'll go from, go from memory. Education committee reviewed the student's records policy. As you know, we've heard this spiel with, the WASB provides us suggestions and recommendations. And the student records policy came up, even though it was revised a couple of years ago, there was significant changes that needed to be made. One of the changes had to do with how to define what records were. We had a list about seven to eight records, very specific examples. You can see letter B, letter D, letter C all crossed out. And WASB recommended that we go back to the legally defined categories that were in the state statute. So looking at what student records are, progress records are, behavioral records are, and physical health records. And those are the records that we should be collecting under the student records policy. So those are now included, and the more specific examples, while they may fit within those four categories, have been removed. So that's a major change on that first page. Another piece was further defining confidentiality. We didn't have a confidentiality section within the current version of the policy that we're living under. So we wanted to make sure we define what that confidentiality is more, and then also defining what the terms legitimate educational interests are, the term parents, the term adult students, and the term school officials. At the bottom, we didn't have language about a program called Safe at Home. Those, we do have several families within our school district who have a confidential address that's actually not in infinite campus, there's an alternative address there for various reasons. And we just wanted to make sure that while we were following that practice and policy from the state, we wanted to make sure we had this in our policy underneath the confidentiality The large legitimate educational interest section has just been moved up, so that's why that has been crossed out there. And then we need to update our release of records, some of our language to match statute. So for example, we need to forward any records to students who may be leaving our district to enroll in another district by next working day. Let's just that language change there. And then just making sure that we had up-to-date language for directory information. So every year, if you complete your child's online registration, the OLR system, usually in July-ish, you go through the directory information page where you say yes or no to whether your student's information can be released to this person, this person, this person, or this organization. So we wanted to make sure that we had the line about military recruiters and institutions of higher ed. Well, that's a practice we have, and that's actually in our admin reg, and that's in the OLR system. We wanted to make sure that was in our policy. And then just updating language again about that we do collect this information annually in the online registration system. Other than that, a couple changes in some responsibilities for our superintendent. And you can see those changes there and why. And then we want also, WASB, our lawyer, recommended in the purple there to update language about liability for employees of the school district, including board members. So we have that language there as well. And typically I give you all the language from WASB and the red comments, so you can definitely see why we do what we do. And that's it. It's a fun policy.
It's a lot of work. Nice job putting this together.
Thanks.
Board members, any questions, comments, thoughts? All right, first reading, we don't have everybody here, so.
That's okay.
See this back again.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, another first reading, consider revisions to board policy 656 grants from public and private sources. And Scott, it's your turn.
Good evening. The finance committee, thank you, had a conversation last Monday on this policy. Just as a reminder, WASB reviewed all of our policies, and so we're systematically navigating through all the policies, making suggested changes as needed. The revisions that you see up on the board, I'll go to sort of the middle area, that starts with grant proposals submitted by employees that do not include a commitment of district expenditures should be considered and approved by the superintendent or designee. The exception to that would be the next paragraph that talks about if there are grant proposals that do require a commitment of district funds would need to be considered and approved by the Board of Education. And then lastly, the very large-looking, second to last paragraph, that's a complete addition, was something that was written by the WASB attorney. So certainly we can't take credit for that, but I appreciate them providing that. And that simply means that the regular recurring ongoing grants that we get each and every year, all of our title grants, I point to Sarah for that, our IDA, special education grants, again, things that we get every single year, we don't necessarily do a specific application for those. We do submit a budget to DPI every year, asking for approval that allows us to then expend and claim those funds. That paragraph just says that superintendent authorization or Board of Education authorization would not be required for those regularly, every year, ongoing grants that we receive. And that is a summary of our revisions.
Any questions? So if a teacher wanted, if they had the opportunity to put in a grant application for a couple hundred dollars for their classroom, it would have to go to the superintendent for approval before they could put in the grant?
That's what this is saying, yes.
I'm just wondering the rationale behind making getting grants harder.
I think because many people assume that when they get a grant, then it's their personal property, when in fact it's actually becomes the property of the district as the grant is being performed on behalf of the district. It's the asset management and tax and the like.
Got it. Okay. Question, the thing too, so we changed it to grant proposals in the blue there, but then up at the top we sell it all proposals, and then we say proposals, proposals, proposals. So we should be consistent if we're gonna call it grant proposals through the whole thing? Or change it one spot and then we don't have to change it all the others, but we have to change it at the top? I don't know. I don't know if that came from WASB or we put that in, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's very easy for us. What we could do is proposals, and then parentheses here and refer to as grant proposals.
Finally, you don't have to keep repeating ourselves, you know.
I didn't you shout.
What?
I didn't you shout.
Thanks for those suggestions, others.
That was good.
Thank you.
We'll see this again next time as well. All right, we got 278, consider dual class action settlement.
Good evening, board members. This is a topic that I've been sharing with you now for some time and has been happening behind the scenes, so to speak, if you will, and wanted to just share with you tonight that we've been asked to approve the settlement, as I described to you previously. Payment is, as I've described in the administrative content of this document, the actual form that I would intend on signing, assuming that the board is intent on doing so. As a friendly reminder, the amount that the district would receive would be paid out over the course of a period of a number of years. The actual language in the document refers to, and I'm quoting now, the settling government entity, that's us, will receive an initial payout of 54.05% of its total allocation. That would be here in a couple of weeks, assuming that we were signing it. Of that 54.05%, almost 11% would come to us here in December, and then about 11% every year for the next four years thereafter. We intend, assuming that the board is interested in signing into this agreement, to use these dollars to continue to support wellness initiatives for our young people.
So that's the gross, the number that they've quoted, this is very sinister in some ways. The number that they've quoted is the gross number. And the gross number does.
that I would intend on signing, assuming that the board is intent on doing so. As a friendly reminder, the amount that the district would receive would be paid out over the course of a period of a number of years. The actual language in the document refers to, and I'm quoting now, "The settling government entity," that's us, "will receive an initial payout of 54.05% of its total allocation." That would be here in a couple of weeks, assuming that we were signing it. Of that 54.05%, almost 11% would come to us here in December, and then about 11% every year for the next four years thereafter. We intend, assuming that the board is interested in signing into this agreement, to use these dollars to continue to support wellness initiatives for our young people.
So the gross, the number that they've quoted, this is very sinister in some ways.
Yes.
The number that they've quoted is the gross number, and the gross number does not include the propitiation of... I mean, I don't, I mean.
No, that's really cool.
Knock yourself out, have a vote, I don't.
What's really important, everyone feel comfortable. I just don't, I know that we've been bound to have that in closed session, so.
We'll move this to closed session next, you know?
Yeah, April 3rd.
Are we going to lose out if we don't?
I will find out. If we need to, we can call a special meeting maybe.
Is there, without giving any details, is there something that you were uncomfortable with in the information, or just the math?
No, I just want to be sure that we all understand what the real, what the real number is.
So would, yes, but would the number, if the number were slightly different, like, would that preclude you from voting to accept the?
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, we'll bring this to closed session, April 3rd. All right, moving on to 7D, Consider Approval of Village of Mount Park Tennis Court Reconstruction Bid at Viking Park.
Thank you again, board members. This is just a continuation of the brief conversation we had at the board table, I want to say maybe four weeks ago. This was in reference to some work that is being done on the joyly-owned park, we call it Viking Park. This is the tennis courts, and previously, we had mentioned that the school district was picking up the cost of certain things to be done here in our, in our school community, and the village was going to pick up the cost of certain things in their school community. And this is one of those that our village has partnered with us on to help cover. I believe you can see here that, while unfortunately, we did not receive many bids for this, this was taken care of through the bidding process at the village, through a gentleman by the name of Jeff Gorman, he's our Dave Reed, so to speak. And one bid came up, it's a little bit more expensive than was allocated. I've been told that the village is okay with accepting this bid. Because it's a joyly-owned property, I just wanted to make certain that the board here was aware of all the details, and certainly, if we can answer any questions either about the bidding process, thank you to Sarah Straka, who's bird dog this, and then we talked about the design earlier, so happy to ask any questions.
So are they accepting the bid number, alternate bid one and two and the?
That's the question we don't know. To your last point about the back, the slimline backboard, we don't know if they've accepted that, but certainly we can, we can find out. Do we have an answer?
Oh, Brett, hurry.
I can offer, we haven't accepted anything yet. Parks and Rec will be voting on it a week from tomorrow, and we'll let you know what the number is and what we come in at. And I know that there's a conversation with the pickleball group, who's willing to try to raise some money for certain things that they want on the pickleball courts, extra fences, things like that, and we'll figure it out and then let you know, unless we have a final answer to the bidder.
Thank you. We would love to know if that does include that backboard.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that alternate bid number, I think it's two.
It's number two. So just to be clear, this is not dollars that are coming from the school district. These are all dollars that are coming from the village.
So our vote is to let the village spend this money?
Knowing that.
Sorry, I think, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong for sure, but as I understand it, our vote is to authorize the improvements at Viking Park, necessarily, according to this.
Is there or has been any discussion regarding, and it doesn't matter, I just don't want to get in a situation, but we had brought up last time just kind of the, who has first rights? You know, if pickleball group is having a pickleball weekend tournament, raising money for 200 and, I mean, $325,000, they should have a right to it. But if I am a weekend pickleball player and I want to go play.
They have to sign it out like you do a parachuter, right? That's.
Okay, so that's my question. Through the, through the rec department?
That's exactly right, yes.
But it would be blocked during school times?
For the school district to use for physical education. Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
So I imagine there'll be communication to the community about the need to preserve these new pickleball courts, but I guess my wonder is, what happens if somebody's playing, and this goes to tennis, too, playing tennis, pickleball, whatever, while school is in session, and, you know, did they just, does somebody go out and say, "I'm sorry, you have to leave?"
Yep.
Okay.
When we spoke with Nick about this, and you may remember in my board report to you, that it's no different than any other facility that's owned by the village, in this case it's co-owned, but with the school district, there have been times where we've just said, "Oh, excuse me," we kind of had somebody else who signed out for use of this, "Won't you finish up your match and then get on, get on your way?" And people have always been so gracious in this community.
I wonder if it's not a bad idea to have some sort of signage to that effect?
Mm-hmm.
Just so that it's understood when you walk up to, just because it's kind of a...
I have had people ask me, like, "We went and played on the tennis courts, are we supposed to do that during school?" I'm like, "Imagine if not, somebody would have come out and told us otherwise."
That's right.
They're like, "It felt kind of weird." I'm like, "I mean, yeah, I get it." They're like, "There was no gym class, well, it's probably fine," or something like that.
Other questions, thoughts?
Motion to approve letting the village do tennis courts.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Are you none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to eight, citizens' comments.
Based on what we see here.
All right, moving on to nine, future candidates are listed, as always. If you have anything you'd like to add. Moving on to number 10, schedule of next meeting. Anything to add?
Yeah, if you don't mind, real quick, May 1st is obviously our first meeting of the month. It also happens to be our reorganization meeting, and I was going to propose to the board a 5:30 education committee start time, a 6:30 reorganization meeting, and a regular board meeting to follow the reorg meeting. Does that meet with everyone's interests? Thank you. I'll put that in, I think we have, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to 11.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Leah, to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned.